Good afternoon. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, June 16, 2020. Those of you joining us from home, welcome. And I would like to note that we do have one council member, Councilmember Gadeela is joining us electronically this evening. Okay, first on our agenda is an update, quarterly update from Nick Glue with Medco.
Good afternoon, Your Honor. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to check in quick. I've got a few slides that I will run through to provide an update and maybe some perspective from through our lens as far as just some activity in the environment in general. And then I'm happy to answer any quick questions that you have. So Rachel, go ahead. Next slide. First of all, I just wanted to provide you with a little bit of information that we've been tracking this on a weekly basis. In fact, we update these charts and send them to our board each week. The mayor and city manager get a copy of these as well. Essentially, what we're watching is kind of the unemployment situation, not just at the state level, but at the county and local level as well. So what this, these two charts are doing, this is for Lynn County, it's tracking at the top first initial unemployment claims. So that week that the first claim was made by an individual. And then what the bottom chart is tracking is those continuing unemployment claims. You can see in both numbers, it was all the, it was all the way back in early April that we actually hit our, hit our biggest number for initial unemployment claims. And then you can see overall continuing unemployment claims. So this is new and folks that remain on unemployment. You can see that we've slowly been trending downwards. We'll get some new data for the previous week here in just a couple of days. But as of our last report from the 6th of June, you can see that in Lynn County, we're just a little over 13,000 people still unemployed. Next slide, Rachel. These numbers break down by industry. So again, we're looking at Lynn County. You can see that early on, the big gainers, especially back in March, were our Accommodation and Food Service. That's our, that's our restaurants and our, and our retail type providers. You can see they were kind of, not in a great way saying this, but leading the charge per se in initial claims. But overall, what has happened in Lynn County is the highest number is actually still in manufacturing, followed by food service and then retail trade. Next If you just want to look at the state level, just to see where things compare, you can actually see last week, we did tick up a little bit in initial claims, but overall, still offset by folks that have come off unemployment. So that number has slowly been dropping since a peak the week of May 9. But you can see as of 6-6, still almost 160,000 Iowans who are unemployed at this point. Next slide. This is a chart that we, and then you can see, you know, what this looks like, the state level, manufacturing again, still, still leads the way as far as overall unemployment claims exceeding 60,000 in manufacturing jobs alone, followed by food service and then retail trade, or actually not. Now, you can see self-employed individuals. It's actually a number that's typically unemployment benefits haven't gone to self-employed individuals in the, in the way that they have through some of the programs that have been launched over the last couple of months. You can see self-employed is actually a number, number three, healthcare, number four. And I'm getting all out of order. You can see what the big numbers are, healthcare, food service, and then retail trade. So those are state numbers. Next slide. This is a chart that we actually track through our dashboard every month. We've got these numbers back for several years, but basically what it does is it's tracking the unemployment rate over time. So that you can see, you can see we had a slight uptick in March, and then the biggest hit was in April. We'll have updated numbers for May, probably here within the next week. So we'll be able to update that chart. Just to dig in a little bit deeper, it's a little bit delayed how quickly we can get it. But just if you're interested to know, Marion, as if you peeled ourselves apart as a standalone community, our unemployment rate as of April was 11.5%. Next slide. One silver lining is perhaps this, this is our labor force, meaning the number of people that are either employed or actively seeking employment, they want to be employed. You can see if you compare the number in April compared to April of 2019, we actually do have a higher labor force. So before COVID, we were talking about workforce availability, shortage of qualified workers, needing to always grow our labor force, that pool of just eligible workers. Actually, in April, we continued to trend upward compared to the same time last year. It's always good to see that moving upwards versus backwards as many parts of the country actually continue to lose available labor. Our goal now is to get this labor force back employed and being productive in our economy as we continue to rebound. Next slide. You guys looked a little bit at these types of stats, I believe it was last meeting or the meeting prior, when Tom and his team and Gary Hanson provided you just a general overview of new construction starts within the community. I guess what this chart is doing is it's using that same data and then it's comparing it to prior years. So in the chart that we present and share with our board, orange represents commercial industrial new starts, blue represents the valuation of new residential starts. So we break those out in the current year. That's what those color bars are. But then the gold is representing the total value of activity the year prior in 2019, and gray is representing 2018. So to me, what we're seeing makes, makes a lot of sense. Going into this, we had a pretty strong economy. We had a lot of projects that were teed up, residential felt good, our housing market was strong. Interestingly enough, it really remains strong through this, as, as I think you guys talked about in your last meeting. So we're running ahead of where we were in 2019. But let's think back to 2019, and I think we all recognize that it was, the first part of 2019 was a really difficult year when it came to construction. It was very wet, projects were delayed, it was probably not a typical spring. So I think, I think the proof in these numbers will be, what, what is the second half of 2020 look like? Does that activity continue to remain high? Or will we flatten out and basically the numbers kind of catch up to what a typical year looks like for Marion? Anyway, I just wanted to show this chart because I think it provides a little context as far as what this year's activity is looking like compared to prior years. Next slide. This is our pipeline report. We've shared you, shared this with you in the past, essentially every month. It just reflects the volume of activity, the value of activity that we are working with. So from a trend line standpoint, the green is probably the best barometer for projects to come. You can see that, you know, we've dropped off perhaps since a peak of projects in April, but it, it still remains very high. And so I think we're, we're encouraged by the number of projects that continue to express interest in the community. I think there are a good handful of developers who have hit pause to at least assess for a couple of months. But by and large, there's still a good amount of projects that we are working towards and working to support that hopefully will land in this community. So let's break those down just a little bit. I'll give you just an overview of a few of the active prospects. Next slide, Rachel. Just, and then the next slide, just, just two quick charts to walk through. A lot of the activity that I'm seeing come through my email are actually some leads that are coming down from both the state and then our regional partners at ICR. Oftentimes, their leads come from the state as well. But as I was sharing with our board this morning, many of these projects will come in my inbox and we'll look at them, we'll understand the types of utility infrastructure needs there are, we'll, we'll understand the type of water consumers they are, and very quickly, we move them to our lost projects category and we document why they weren't a fit for our community. The projects listed here are ones that actually could fit Marion. So project pinpoint, a $7 million project, you can see, first, they were looking for existing buildings of 180 to 265,000 square feet. Well, we don't have that, but we do have a greenfield site of 20 to 25 acres. So we submitted a proposal for that particular project. This is one that you can see in my note, based on an update earlier this week, is currently on pause because of the pandemic. Project Clean Room is a lead actually from the state. This is interesting because this is a supplier and manufacturer of PPE equipment. So I think we all know that demand for that type of product is greatly elevated, and it's unknown for how long that, that demand might be, might be elevated. So this is a project seeking 50 to 60,000 square feet of existing space. We actually have a building in our community that could potentially fit this user, and so we submitted that for consideration. Project Focus is, as you can see, a very large project. It's a project of an existing company with multiple locations across the state of Iowa. What I can share with you is that Marion is one of two final sites being considered. And at this point, it's essentially a negotiation with development companies and landowners, and the final piece is really kind of out of our control, but obviously a very significant project that's considering our community. We do have individuals continuing to look at the current YMCA site. I think that's, we all know that that's kind of a critical piece for the, for the why to, to sell. We've had some initial parties who have offered some ideas and have moved on to other projects. We have, I believe, two active development groups that are continuing to pursue it. You may recall that late last, I'm losing track of time, in the last handful of months, IEDA did reallocate some brownfield tax credits, and this site was awarded $600,000 in brownfield tax credits to help with the remediation and, and cleanup and demolition of that site. So that's a positive. We're hoping that we can find someone that would be a good fit for this project soon. I know their brokers are working hard doing the same. Project U is a government contract project. This is a lead from, it says IDAG, it's called Iowa Area Development Group. They're essentially an economic development group that works to attract projects to REC territories across the state. So the Marion Enterprise Center does have some ground that lies in Lynn County REC territory. So this is a project jointly with them and Lynn County REC that we've been tracking. And the words government contract are in them, which means super, super slow progress. So it's a project that's still viable in our pipeline. And as you can see, would be a pretty substantial sized project as well. We've been working with a developer out on the corner of Highway 13, near 29th Avenue, on a mixed use project. This is probably an example of working with a bank who is perhaps being a little bit more cautious on valuations and understanding appraisals and potential market users. But nevertheless, up in that particular area, 29th and Highway 13 could be a good project here in the community. I just tried to advance the slide, Rachel, and it changed my email. So I need you to advance the next slide. And just a few more I wanted to talk about. You all have generally been made aware of a series of projects that we're working on in the Uptown area. In total, valued about $50 million of projects. We have some meetings happening as soon as this Thursday, trying to position that project to bring it forward to the city council for further review. So we're excited about that. We're working on a, this is a pretty large, about a $10 million project out in the MEC. I struggle on how to describe it. I use the words as a storage facility. Think there's some larger storage type facilities that have been built in larger metro areas that essentially look like multi-story office buildings, very high quality exterior finish to the building. It's probably the best way I can describe it, that we're moving forward, hopefully here in the next 30 days. You'll hear more about that. You may recall last month when the council approved a reallocation of land type uses, our tiered structure out in the MEC. One of the reasons that we were moving that forward is for a potential industrial spec building. So that's what this next project is, about a $3 million, 60,000 square foot building. And so we're, we're hopeful, this is another project that has slowed a little bit with the, with the pandemic. We're hopeful that we'll begin seeing some, they call them kind of some phantom listings that they'll put out in different sources to really test the market for this type of building product. And we're still hopeful that we can get something in the ground yet this year. And then finally, we've developed a relationship with, I'll just describe it as a distributing company in the state of Illinois, a pretty good sized project. They'd be looking to construct about 100,000 square foot facility. Quite frankly, just a company looking to get out of the state of Illinois to a more solid, sound business environment. This is a lead that was generated from a existing business partner here in the community and one that's still very, very active and viable. So that's just a, a highlight of maybe the, the top 10 projects within that active prospect list. Next slide, Rachel. Just a couple of final things to wrap up here today. I wanted to share with you, since I, since I did this type of presentation back in December, I believe it was, our Board of Directors did update and adopt some revisions to our playbook, which is our strategic plan. One thing that I wanted to highlight is, is what's circled there. This is what we call our thematic goal, that in English is what is the most important thing right now. So this changes quite regularly. And I just wanted you to, to see that it says, evaluate playbook alignment to current conditions and drive economic recovery. What this is pointing to is, I think, as you know, and as you've seen in many of our communications, we are trying to be very intentional in understanding how we can, can, can support the economic recovery and hopefully the continued economic growth of our existing business mix, especially when we talk about the primary employers in our community. So while page two of our playbook doesn't necessarily have any new strategies or outcomes that we're driving, I want you to be aware that we are being very intentional in listening to engaging how we can continue to best respond kind of beyond the triage period that we helped support over the last few months. So you can see in page two that we have five different outcomes that we are seeking to drive. I'm not going to read through those today, but I share those with you for your own review, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. So that's really our strategy for 2020. Next slide. You can see that each of those bullet points are really summarized here. And the thing that I wanted to zero in on real quickly is number four, and that's intentionally engaging partners. Next slide. Some of the sub-points under that bullet point four, you can see at the bottom, state aligned playbook to support enhanced city strategy. What I want you guys to know is, since you guys started working on your strategic plan towards the end of 2019, and I think continue here in 2020, we understand that there's some, some really intentional things that connect very quickly with organizations like ours, organizations like our Chamber of Commerce, our Uptown Main Street Group. And we want to be very specific in stating there that, that we want to work hard to make sure that what you're measuring and what you're doing, and what you're working on really align very closely with the work that, that we're doing as your economic development partners and as your economic development leaders. So I share that with you, just to know that we've had a couple of meetings with your staff here early on in the year to, to understand some of the things that the council is, is trying to drive, to maybe even push back on some areas and, and provide ideas on, on how we can state that even better. So just know that we're engaged with your team as you continue to work on that strategic plan moving forward. Next slide. Just finally, I wanted to provide an update. Gee, what's happening with Medco's office space? So we had a great plan developed. We had construction plans drawn up. We had bids all ready to go. And a couple of things happened. One, we had some struggles with the landlord that we were pursuing as far as getting on the same page with the, the terms that we were driving towards. So that was one. But secondly, and maybe even, maybe even more so, was the pandemic broke out. And I think with that, our board really felt like we needed to hit pause, and we needed to understand what the implications of the pandemic were going to be on our organization. I don't know if we understand that quite yet. We don't have any huge concerns from a financial standpoint, but I think it made sense for us to hit pause for, for those two reasons alone. The project that we put before you late last year or early this year, and the support that we requested with the extension of the TIF agreement on that building, the construction of the parking lot, we're not necessarily ready to say that that project is dead and we're moving on to something else. But I think there, we're definitely taking in a, a little bit of a drawn out, harder look to make sure that's still in the best, best interest of our organization and all parties involved. So that's the update that I can provide you as far as where we're at. It's not much of a forward steps update, but I think is probably the smartest update for us at this point. So with that, that's all I had prepared, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Glue? Thank you, Nick. I will just say, we really appreciate the relationship the city has with Medco. I think that other communities look at that relationship and frankly, are a bit jealous that we have such a good, close working cooperative relationship with our economic development entities. I know a lot of the work that Nick and his team do are, as part of the city's Economic Development Committee and helping the city to assess and work through potential projects and the, the skills and knowledge that they bring to the table are really valuable and really appreciate that relationship. So if you have nothing else, thank you, Nick, for, for joining us. Okay. Moving on with the agenda, the first item that is marked by the staff for discussion is on page five, at the bottom of page five under regular agenda. So if there are any items prior to that, on which anyone has any questions?
There we go. Just a quick question, and I did send just an email to Lon, and he shared that with Tom. On, it would be on page five, F1. And the question that I had was, one, the request that's being made there is to amend the future land use map that is pending finalization. Is that correct?
Is this in ref, this is in reference to the future land use map amendment that we're setting a public hearing for?
Yeah, this is regarding Bowman Meadows eighth edition. And sorry, Tom, if I'm...
No, you're fine.
I guess what I'm trying just to clarify in my own mind is, is, is this isn't a proposed amendment to the future land use map that we still have yet to finalize.
So the, the future land use map is a part of the city's comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan was adopted in 2010, and we're, we're operating after that future land use map. The, the conversation that's been in the public has been a new zoning map, which is based on the comp plan. So this is a, this, this is a different area than we were talking about at the last meeting. And when this plat was originally proposed and developed, it was about the same time as our zoning or as our comprehensive plan was being adopted in 2010. And so the, there was just misalignment between the comp plan and the zoning that's actually in place. It's currently zoned PDR, and in this preliminary site development plan, it provided for duplex on each one of these lots. So it's, and it's land used designated in the comp plan right now as, as a single family. So we have a, we have a conflict, but the zoning was, is already in place. So we're just, we're amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map to match what the zoning is. So there is no difference between what is being proposed with the develop now from a density perspective or a building perspective. What's being requested ultimately with this, and, and it's in the preliminary site development plan, is that there is a desire to move to duplex units on their own lot, opposed to building a duplex unit on a single lot. And it has a lot to do with how the lending institutions are looking at how they want to mortgage properties. So there's no change in density. There's no real change from what has been previously approved. What ultimately we're doing is we're bringing the zoning that was adopted in line with the comp plan, because I believe, I had to go back and look at the dates, but they were happening about the same time. So really, there's no, from a staff perspective, there's no, there's no real issue here. We're recommending approval of that. And so I guess that's kind of where we're at. The Planning Commission reviewed it and is also recommending approval.
Okay. And I, I, I'll acknowledge at this point with that explanation, I think I was misinterpreting the language in the item. So you've helped me get that straightened away in my own mind. So thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Any other questions on any items prior to the regular agenda?
Yeah, I have my hand raised, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
If I could just start by, I can barely hear you, and I think that was Grant speaking, but I didn't hear a word he said. I just heard Tom's response to it. So I could kind of infer, but I would ask council to speak closer to their mics or something from, just from a participant standpoint. On page two, I wanted to comment about number five, the departmental reports. Two things about that. The first one is on the Marion 911 Public Safety Communications Center, and just want to congratulate Rhonda and the Small Department on having six viable candidates. I know that's a hard position to fill. So I'm glad that they've got a good pool to choose from. And I just want to point that out as a member of the MCOM team. And then the second thing is the receive and file report in the back. So I look at this from time to time, and I know some things are ongoing, but some of these things were logged in more than four years ago. So I feel like we either, we got to change something because that to me is not something that should be on receive and file if it's going to take four plus years. So I would actually, rather than go through each of these, ask that in our July series of meetings, one of the two work sessions, we can actually pull as an agenda item, the request status report and walk through where we're at on some of this. I think the purpose of the chart is really for accountability. And so I think I've gotten as much as I can get from this report, but I have some questions on some of these things that are ongoing and where it's at. So I don't know if that's, if we can make that happen, or if there's a second person on council that agrees if we need to go through that procedure. But that's a request that I'd like to make.
Okay. Anyone else? I think that's worthwhile.
I, are you, I can't hear you if you're talking. I hear something.
Did you hear me?
Barely. I have my volume all the way. I'm sorry. I don't know if it's me or not. I know other people who listen this way have said something in the past. I don't know if it's the mics on the dais or why. I heard Tom fine, and I heard Nick Glue fine. But could you repeat your response?
I was, I said that I think it's worthwhile to go through the receive and file report.
Cool. Okay, great. Thank you. I also had a, just a comment on number nine. And I guess, I was surprised to see the job description for deputy city manager and the consent agenda, and then noticed that we're actually going to discuss, discuss it at the end of the agenda. So it just seemed a little, I just didn't know why that was there. I thought something like that should actually be called out and talked about a little more as a number two position for the city. I, I will say publicly right now that I have some questions about this position right now. I feel pretty strongly that until the strategic plan is ready, and we should be close, I don't want to pull the trigger on this second position yet. I would also like to compare, maybe the council could get a copy of the latest city manager description, so we can look at it alongside of the deputy city manager description and, and make sure that they complement each other well and... and make sure that they complement each other well and aren't any holes or too much redundancy. So I would ask for that. And and a copy of the org chart, the latest org chart along with the current job description for the city manager. If I could get those or I don't know if everybody wants those. I think that would make looking at the, this job description a little more meaningful to have something to compare it against. And I guess that is all I had until page five. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll go on to the regular agenda under administrative services.
Hi, Mayor, this is Greg Hosier. I'm the new payroll accountant with the city. Bringing this one to the table. I'm actually helping out with HR and I am rolling out the, this year's wellbeing program. And I have Mickey Scott with us here today as well from Health Solutions to go through some of the the key points of this, the rollout program. So Mickey Scott could join us. She's on.
I am. Thank you, Greg.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, everybody. Greg and the team asked me today just to go through the new kind of proposal for the wellness program to continue your wellbeing program at the city of Marion. For a background, we've now partnered between the city of Marion and Health Solutions and Mercy Hospitals to provide wellness services for your employees and your spouses that are covered on the health plan. Today is really just the kind of approval to continue the current agreement that we have in place. What we're showing there on the screen right now, thank you, is that really the definition of how we define success for the program on that left-hand side. Our upcoming schedule for launching the program and then the budget on the right-hand side. So goals for the program continue to be the same with COVID and a number of personnel changes at the city of Marion. It was determined a little bit earlier that we would kind of just stay a status quo and continue providing the support for the employees and spouses as we had in the previous year. So our goal is really to continue to increase participation in the program. Really reduce the risk of our highest risk individuals that we identify through our health screenings and maintain the health status of individuals that we identify that are already healthy. And then of course, we're looking at participant satisfaction for these types of wellness programs. We're happy to say that we're over 90%. When we get results in from individuals that say they are satisfied with the programs that they're receiving for the wellness program. And we hope to continue that. Recently, we've done a lot of information around how to be safe. If you are someone that is at risk for higher complications if contracted with COVID. And really what you can do on the prevention side. So we've seen a lot of enhanced wellness services just because of the pandemic recently that have supported the individuals in the city of Marion. For the schedule, we're actually looking to adjust that a little bit this year. Oh, sorry, back one more. Thank you. Scheduled for this year, we did align the health screenings a little bit later in the calendar year, which actually was a benefit, I believe, for your budget cycle. Where we weren't having screenings kind of in the middle of your budget cycle and was better aligned with your fiscal calendar. So we're looking to launch some communications and host our onsite screenings with everyone in August this year. We've been working closely with the Mercy team to ensure that onsite screenings can still be conducted safely with additional precautions to PPE and keeping not only your individuals safe, but also the individuals coming on site to conduct those screenings. And then on the right-hand side of that is just your budget. And so working through the budget approval earlier. We are estimating to be under budget this year and it's also in alignment with last year's budget because we did not make any drastic changes coming into this next year. Next slide. Really just to show the description at the very, very bottom of how we are measuring success. And so those have not changed. But if you were curious or didn't have a chance to look through the notes earlier and wanted to know how we are measuring program success, those details are there. And then I believe your third slide is just the detailed breakdown of that budget by all the different program services and probably multiple slides since it's a larger term. But today's goal is just to ensure that you had the information in front of you that the program was, you know, not changing from last year and we hope to continue that program to provide the health screenings and the education and wellness portal programs for all the employees and covered spouses. And then also continuing to offer the high risk coaching program for individuals that are identified at that high risk status. Are there questions from me based off of what was provided in the agenda memo or the slides today?
Thank you. Questions?
Thanks for presenting, Mickey.
Okay, there are no questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Okay. So any questions on the resolution then for Thursday on this item? Okay. The next item. Number three, are there any questions on number two? Under administrative services. Okay. So number three is the Echo Hill Urban Renewal Area.
Your Honor, staff is recommending designation of the area highlighted on the map as an urban renewal area. This is to give the city the flexibility of using tax increment financing to fund infrastructure improvements in the area. This action is consistent with both the comprehensive plan and the economic development policy. The the, this urban renewal area plan will include, reach if you move into the next slide. This project is including and an improvement to the intersection of Echo Hill and Albert, and Albernet Road. This is to accommodate traffic that is generated by the development of the two schools east of Echo Hill and a stormwater detention basin. This is going to be west of Albernet Road and north of Dawn Drive. This is to support development upstream of that detention and also to protect properties downstream of the detention. The detention is going to be a part of a bigger stormwater management system that is going to cover most of the city. Also included in the plan, a traffic study on Albernet Road. This is to determine if a turn lane is needed at the Oak Ridge Approach. Again, this is also a school, traffic safety project. And also includes a program to support administrative and professional economic administration and professional support and economic development program. The way we've done those is to allocate those among the different districts based on activity. So as you can see, those projects are public infrastructure projects and mainly public safety projects. This district is going to have an 11-year life and it's an economic development, mainly residential district. We've consulted with the taxing jurisdictions. Those are the school district in Lynn County and the Kirkwood Community College and we've heard no comments on this action.
You said it's an 11-year life?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Questions for Amal? Renee, are you hearing us? Okay now?
I, Amal was totally fine. It's just, I don't know. I think it's the mics on the dais. I haven't heard from Will or Colette and I don't know where Grant is sitting. You're okay, but I'm literally leaning into my computer and I thought I've noticed Tom was doing the same when Grant was talking to him. So it's okay. It's not as good as staff that's not in that room. I'll put it that way. But thanks for asking.
Okay. I just want to make sure that you're hearing everything. Okay, any further questions for Ms. Eltaher? Okay, thank you. Item number four is not marked. If anyone has questions and five also. But those will move on to number six. Which is the public facility protective equipment policy. That, Mr. Pluckon?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So this is a draft policy that would require the public coming into city facilities to use personal protective equipment in the form of masks. I will note that one addition that we will be making to it is it does not specifically call out face shields, which also would be acceptable. So we will add that. The way the policy was constructed, it, it does not limit it to only fabric face masks. It said otherwise it's are included, but they're such a different design. It's probably worth specifically calling those out on their own. So just wanted to see if the city council had any feedback, any other changes that you wanted to make to it, but it would essentially go into effect when the city is fully open to the public.
Council member Jensen has a question.
Yeah, Lon, quick question on this. It says this will remain in effect until further notice. Do we anticipate that this is going to be linked to a, one of the governor's proclamations or how can the public kind of, I know once it changes, we'll put that out, but is it from an inside standpoint, do we anticipate it's linked to one of her proclamations down the road, like going into phase three or something like that?
Yeah, I would anticipate that would be tied to a declaration from Lynn County Public Health that Lynn County.
County Public Health, yes.
Right.
Okay. Other questions? Comments on the policy? Okay, nothing is marked under public service. If anyone has questions on any items under public service, please say so at this time.
I have something, Your Honor.
Go ahead, Renee.
I received a correspondence from a resident who was annexed in. They live on Albernet Road. And they were inquiring about the $2,000 hookup fee. So they're odd septic right now. But I guess I, something I wasn't totally clear on. I was explaining the new construction and the costs are rising to us and we're not profiting, but we don't want to go into debt. And you know, that's why we're charging the 2,000. But if they've lived in the town, will they have to pay since they've been paying taxes for years now, since they've been annexed? Are we still charging people for hookups if they're not new construction? Is that addressed in there and I missed it or can someone clarify?
I believe that would be for any new connection that's made to the sanitary sewer because the new agreement is based on actual discharge and not population where the old one was tied to population. So every connection needs additional flow going down to the wastewater treatment plant. So even though they have been in the city, when they make that connection, we have to purchase the, the capacity at the wastewater treatment plant from Cedar Rapids to serve that new connection.
Okay, that makes sense. I took a couple of notes and I'll get back with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Under public service? Okay, moving on to engineering. Mr. Barcalow, as usual, he has most of his items marked for discussion.
All right. So item one and two, we're going to have a public hearing on Thursday regarding the 2020 HMA reservicing project. We did receive one bid from L.L. Pelling. They were at 98.5% of the engineer's estimate. There is a detailed bid tab included in your council packet. About 100,000 of that will be reimbursed by Lynn County for Seacrest Road for their portion of it. Workshop begin no later than October 23rd, 20, or should be completed no later than October 23rd of 2020. And there are liquidated damages in the amount of $300 per day.
Okay, any questions on that item? And we've seen the list of the roads that are on this project. Any questions? You said you only received the one bid.
Yep, that's typical for our HMA project.
Right. Okay. Number three.
Number three is a an agreement with the YMCA regarding maximum sanitary discharge. So they're actually at the top of the hill right there. And so we want to make sure when they discharge their pool that they don't flood the downstream neighbors. And so we've worked it out with them for certain times and a certain flow rate. Because that's only an eight-inch line that they're tied into. So they're in agreeance with it. And we may have to change it in the future as more development occurs in that area. But this is the agreement moving forward, but that way they can clean their pool when they need to.
Something that the ordinary person wouldn't even think about that we need an agreement.
So item five is a 28-year agreement between Lynn County and the city regarding the Winslow Road, Road improvements. This is about a $35,000 cost to the city for about 100-foot of street. If we don't improve it with, when they're doing the project, we'll have to come back in with either public service crews or farm this out ourselves for that small section. So with the direction that we've gotten from city council to do public, public relationships, partnering with Lynn County to have this all done at once rather than leave a 100-foot segment not improved, made sense to move forward. This is not in the current CIP, but we have already put together a worksheet for it for the next CIP project, which is the next fiscal year. So that money won't be expended until next year anyways. So.
Okay, does that make sense to everybody? Questions on that? Hey, number six.
Number six is regarding the Quickstar QuickTrip that's going to go in at Highway 151 and 62nd. As you may or may not know, QuickTrip tends to build them in a very steady pace. And if you go to the next slide, it should be a site point. So this being a truck stop right off of 151, we're very concerned about that amount of truck traffic turning into this facility without a traffic signal that is required to go in with a six-month lead time typically on signals. They might build, get them a little sooner being private. We do have safety concerns with semi stacking on 151 and causing accidents. We have been in negotiations and we're currently drafting an MOA with QuickStar to even put in temporary traffic signals if they can't get the poles in time. But we really do not want to open this truck stop until we have those signals installed because of the safety concerns the city staff has.
Okay.
Iowa Department of Transportation feels the same way.
Yes, Steve.
Mike, could you comment on who is going to be paying for these traffic signals? I don't recall. These are in our CIP.
They are not. So the city will not participate. Then we will provide for the inspection of public improvements like we typically do. So at this point, QuickTrip, QuickStar will pay for the signals. That's not to say they will not work it out with the property owner to the north that's also doing a rather large development for them to cost share it, but we're letting those two entities work it out.
Thank you. Good question.
As well.
Okay, go ahead, Renee.
Thank you. Have we approved this development yet? Am I just missing? Am I just missing, am I forgetting this? Did we approve this QuickTrip truck stop on 151?
I know it came to the city staff at least about two years ago, and then it kind of got shelved for a while. I believe the final plat has already been approved. I don't know if the zoning needs to be approved, but at this point, I believe it's just a site plan that would be reviewed by staff. I don't know if it would come back to city council. Tom, if you could help me out?
Yeah, absolutely. So the property is zoned appropriately for the project. So the, we would just work through site plan review process and building design consistent with the city code, so.
So I realize we, like, kind of what you're saying is we can't vote no, because they're doing what we said can be done there. But we, have we approved this project?
Well, that, I think that's, we want to ensure that we get what we need out of the project. And so that's why we're bringing it forward and ensuring that the approval would happen consistent with the site plan, which would include the signals.
So the city council has approved this project? I'm just, just looking for that.
The council would not approve the project. It would be all handled internally with staff, like building plan review and site plan review. Because it's, because it's in an appropriately zoned district.
So what you're saying is that this, the project itself doesn't require council approval? There's no rezoning?
Correct.
Requires council approval, approvals are handled by the staff through site plan review, making sure that it's compliant with code and city requirements?
Correct, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so that makes sense, but just help me out here, and please be patient. What's the difference between this and the duplexes that we were talking about, since we have to approve something there?
So that zoning requires a preliminary site development plan to come forward. So it's zoned, planned development, so there's a preliminary and final site development planning process that comes through. When it's just straight zoning, that's handled internally if the use is an approved use within that zoning district classification.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So are there, are there design guidelines they have to comply with? I think that may be what Renee is concerned about.
Yeah, and that's something that staff will review. So planning and zoning, engineering, we'll all review the site plans, which they're working on and submitting to us. I know that they've submitted the building plans to the building department to try and get their footing permit. It's just, we want to make sure they're on the same page, that we are not going to allow them to open the doors without that signal in there. That's why I want this resolution to make sure they understand that.
Okay, okay.
Just, just to be, so Planning and Zoning Commission will not review the site plan. It's all handled internally. This is an older, an older lot, and it's been, it's been zoned this way for 20-plus years, I would venture to guess. I'd have to go back and verify that, but it's, it's been plotted and zoned for quite some time.
I assume that we're going to work with them as much as possible and try our hardest, even though there may be a certain baseline they have to meet, to try to get as best a product and look as we can at an, at a significant entryway to the city?
Yes, we always do.
Okay, yeah, I don't want to speak for Renee, but that may be what she's concerned about, and it's certainly a concern for me to make sure that at an entryway to the city, that we're pushing for as much as possible for the, what it ends up looking like, even though there may not be strict design guidelines.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Any other questions on that item? Yes, go ahead.
Just looking at your design that you have up now, I see 62nd Street is the top-of-the-page road. Is that 151?
No, that's actually just a front-edge road, 151 that would then be to the north of that.
That makes more sense.
There's only one access off of 62nd.
Thank you.
Yep. I think if you go to the next slide, there's the actual improvements to 151. So it's very similar to what we did at Hennessy and 13.
Okay, any further questions on that item? Renee, did you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Number seven?
Then the last item I have is when we adopted SUDAS back in 2015, there is one section that we did not catch that needed to be changed in the Code of Ordinances that references the Cedar Rapids Metro specifications, which no longer exist. So we're just cleaning that up. So this is the first reading.
Okay. Questions on that? Thank you, Mike. Okay, community development, we have one item marked. There's Billings.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Kesha Billings, Associate Planner here in the Planning Department. Wanted to take a minute to update you or provide you an update of kind of what's been going on with the contract with Kara, how we've been doing, and kind of the steps that we see going forward. So as I noted in the memo in your council packets, we had a contract with Kara last June, signed by the council. We did nationwide search. Council felt, you know, staff felt that she was the best, best choice with the best design. Been awesome to work with, so we went full steam ahead, June, July, and August on this. In September, we got delayed, waiting to hear back from Federal Highway on how we proceeded with the actual construction of the gateway feature. In March, we heard back, not, not without some prodding from staff members, but anyway, we heard back from Federal Highway that we can continue with the project with Kara doing full design and having oversight of construction of the gateway feature. However, it needs to be installed after the bridge is constructed and after the project is accepted by the DOT. And so although we have an anticipated letting this winter, construction next year, assuming it happens within one year, it could take an additional year to get through the final audit process with the DOT. And so the contract extension with Kara is until June 30th, 2022. Should the unfortunate happen, and we need to extend it, we'll revisit it at that time. This contract is only an extension of time, not money, or it's continuing the funding that's already been allocated, no more. And then a separate contract for construction of the gateway feature, again with Kara, will be brought back to the council at a later date. Once, I mean, it's, it's time out right now to actually get into the true design, nuts and bolts, and actually fabrication of the gateway feature. We wouldn't, we didn't feel it was necessarily right to go into contract for build services right now when in a year, it's a, it's a pickle on maybe what materials would cost at that point. So it's an unknown at this point. But again, a separate contract will be coming back to you for that. But reason why I have, I can say all this without care here, but reason why I want to care here especially is we wanted to bring forth the designs that the selection committee, so back in June when Kara was brought on, we also formed a selection committee to go through materials, to go through colors, to go through lighting scenarios, and how this bridge was, or how the bridge in the gateway feature was really going to look. And so I've sent three images to Rachel, and so basically I'm wanting kind of the council's blessing to proceed with design based on selection committee's recommendation and, and proceed, so Kara can have some understanding that this is the path forward, that council is also in agreement that this is the design that we want for the gateway feature. So this would be, actually, do you want to-
Yeah, I can jump in. Yeah, I'm happy to jump in. Renee, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you. That podium seems to be fine, but thanks for asking.
Okay, super. So how we got from my initial design proposal to this is, if you remember, we had four towers, how many slides do we have? Do we have three? Yeah, let's go, let's go to the next one. Awesome. So we had four light towers that were above the bridge, and they were 12 feet tall, and those were scaled to sort of human scale while you're on the trail. So as we zoomed back on the entire bridge, those towers got really, really tiny. And what we determined in our series of meetings is that the railing design, while still on a human scale for bridge users, that railing design, which echoes the towers, that's what is, can be appreciated by pedestrians and cyclists on the bridge. But what we wanted was those towers to have some stronger visual weight for traffic. So we scaled these up to, I mean, we basically doubled their size. They're 24 feet tall, the arcs are considerably bigger. And then we took that entire design and dropped it down so that it centered on the railing. So what we've got is actually a more properly scaled gateway feature coming in towards our uptown district. Yeah, yeah, so this is our, and then this is our daytime. So the way these are getting constructed is Troyer from Shoemaker was able to get all of those railings into his portion of the bridge. So none of the allocated art funds are going for the railing. They're all going towards those towers, which is sort of what allowed us to scale this up. And at least in terms of rough bids and material prices right now, keep that in budget. My silver lining hope is that two years from now, when we're actually ready to do these towers, all of the fallout from the pandemic in terms of supply chain, labor costs, where materials come from, how much it costs, how much it costs to get materials to where we need it to go, that that all settles, prices restabilize, and this project still lands in budget. If not, like, design contract is extended far enough into the future to cover any unforeseeable challenges we may hit in the next two years. I am happy to take questions from anyone regarding aesthetic issues on the bridge. I can't speak to engineering.
Questions for Kara? Yes, Will?
So when you say the railings are part of the bridge project?
Yes.
Does that mean the artwork in the railing is part of the-
Yes. Troyer and I meticulously went through, so here's where the challenge is, is in color matching. So I had picked colors from colors that I like, and then took those to Media Quest, who I was initially talking to about how do we, because I can't build anything this big in my shop. So I was looking at using an outside fabricator, then working with the colors they had available, and then taking those colors and getting RBG values down to the number to give to Troyer, so he could put that in his specifications for the paint colors that get used on the railing. So we will at least have a beautiful railing to look at while the towers are getting fabricated and installed.
Questions?
I have something, Nick.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's more of a suggestion than anything, Kara, and that would be that you make some kind of Christmas ornament, make that and sell it at the farmer's market, because I love this design. And I just think it, since it's at a gateway, it's so Marion. I know that, you know, you worked the colors in too. I just think that would be really cool, and I would be your first customer. That's all I got. Thanks.
I'm on it after I check with legal to make sure I reproduce my own design and not get sued by the city.
Gotcha, okay.
Thanks, Renee.
I think that's it.
No other questions? All right.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kara. Thanks, Kesha.
Just wanted to note, this has not been sent-
Speaking of the microphone.
Just wanted to note, this has not been sent out in any type of public media. I know that the committee kind of basically adjourned last August, but until this came to council, I didn't necessarily want these images kind of going out for what the future bridge is. And so on Thursday, with the approval of the contract, and it is approval of the design, then we will be able to showcase this as, as kind of the future face of the, of the gateway for Marion.
Okay.
Just an FYI.
Good job. Thank you. Any, any questions on item number two? Under community development? Any discussion on that item? Okay, if there aren't any, I will move on to other department discussions. Under administration, we have an item regarding deputy city manager search.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to have a discussion with the city council to see what you might think about the potential of retaining a search firm to assist with the recruitment for the deputy city manager position. This is a budgeted position. It's been vacant since October of 2019. And we have, in the past, used executive search firms for department head-level positions, most notably recently, police chief, and then before this last search with the library. We've done that a couple of times with director searches there as well. And in the absence of having somebody internally, right now with HR being vacant to be able to manage the process, that's primarily what they would assist us with doing. With this type of a position, one of the big benefits that they will bring to the table is that they often know who is searching, but not really searching, those folks out there who might be searching for exactly the right type of job or the right type of position. So you can often yield a different group of candidates than you do with just doing a conventional search without having people that have those kind of contacts. I've talked to two firms so far about their approach and what the expense is with something like that. And there seem to be two main ways that they get compensated. One firm is, expects their fees to be 25% of the first-year compensation for the selected candidate. The other one just gave me a range of 10,000 to 14,000, depending on the services that we would actually choose to have them do. It really comes down to how much involvement do they have upfront with things like the development of the position profile? Or do you have that ready to go when the individual, when your individual walks in the door and they're handling the search? This is a high-profile position. It's going to be very public-facing, and I would anticipate using process, something along the lines of what we did with the police chief, where we have a series of interview panels that the candidates will have a chance to interview and just really do a fairly robust community vetting of the individual. The job description was included in here for additional review by city council. Depending on the amount that it would charge, you know, if their total contract is under 15,000, that is actually below my approval authority, but I didn't want to proceed with that without having a discussion with council about it. But I think if we were to move forward with something like this, that would help us keep that process moving along. We are currently doing the recruitment for the HR director position, but I would not anticipate having that position filled for likely several months. And that would, if we were going to wait for them to do this search, then that would put us out beyond that several months as well.
Okay, questions for Lon? Are you, are you looking for a decision from us or guidance from the city council on this, or?
What I would want is just authorization from the city council to engage a search firm to move this along. That'd be the motion on Thursday.
So that would be an actual motion on the agenda?
For Thursday, yep.
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, my comment again, with this, with this position being the number two position for the city, I think we're looking for a person with some traits different than we had previously. And the cost here is very reasonable considering you're using an executive search firm. And to me, it's almost a necessity to do it for this position as well. So, I mean, if, in the private industry, if you're talking about a full executive search for top exec, you're talking typically in the 30% of salary range. And so this is running around 10%. So I consider that to be certainly reasonable under the circumstances.
Any other thoughts on that?
I would also note that if you check your email, I did send out for additional context to the council, a copy of the former deputy city manager job description that this one's proposed to replace. So you can kind of go line by line and see what the differences are, and also a copy of mine so you can kind of see how that slots into the organization.
Any input on that, questions? There will be a agenda item on Thursday to authorize hiring a search firm. Thank you. Next item, we have Police Chief Kits Miller here to discuss the use of force policy of the police department. Welcome, chief.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys letting me talk. Like every other police chief, probably in the country, the last few weeks I've been going through our policies to make sure that what we're doing is right and that it protects the public, but it also protects our officers because that policy is there for both of them. I've got some slides. Our policy basically incorporates the Iowa code. This is the use of force or what is defined as a reasonable use of force under the Iowa code. I'm not going to read through each one of these. I, I'll just kind of talk my way through them, but I do want to go through our policy but also kind of give you some training tidbits of what we're doing for training. I've got some statistics on the use of force. We've got a pretty comprehensive way of tracking use of force, which I think makes us stand out a little bit from other departments. And I think when you see the numbers, I think you'll be impressed, as I was when I went through them. So the reasonable force slide, again, that's, that's Iowa's version. Click to the next one. So this is our regular use of force. And if you notice the first one, it's, it's, we can only use that force necessary to overcome resistance. Again, that's pretty standard across the country. I did make a change to this, if you go to the next slide, to add the de-escalation paragraph on here. We've trained for de-escalation. We teach it and that's how we act, but we never had it specifically in this policy. Bits and pieces were in other policies, but given what happened with Mr. Floyd, I thought it was important to put that in. So we wrote that into our policy here this week. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Again, when we're looking at our deadly force policy, there was a couple of small changes in here that I made. We had, initially, we had generally will not fire warning shots. I changed that to we will not fire warning shots. There's no reason to ever fire a warning shot. And I also added in there that as a verbal warning should be given unless it increases the risk of serious bodily harm to the officer or a third party. That was something, again, that we train on. We do that at firearms. We do that with our simulation training, but we just didn't have it in the policy. So I added it. And the last part about shooting into the moving vehicle, that's a risky move. So I added the language as long as it does not create a substantial risk to other motorists or pedestrians, and that they can't fire at a vehicle in motion simply as a means to disable it. Again, that's something that was understood but needed to be put into the policy. Let's go to the next one. I also added this, chokeholds. Chokeholds were not something that we've ever taught. It was not a never, never an approved tactic that we used. But again, it wasn't specifically prohibited in the, in the policy. So I felt like we ought to put it in there, and I did. I did put, there are some policies in some departments where they prohibit them completely. I added the line about unless deadly force is warranted and necessary, because if an officer's fighting for his life, all bets are off. We don't teach people to gouge eyes, but if somebody's trying to grab your gun or strangle you, you do what you have to do. So I wanted to give the officers at least that portion of that, if it was a last resort type situation, that they should be allowed to do it. And then the intervention policy. Again, I wanted officers to know in writing that they're supposed to intervene. We have conduct rules that, again, I think would dictate that they do that, but it was not spelled out, which is something that a lot of the reform calls have been calling for, that officers do intervene. So we put it in writing into our policy. And again, that's if, if any officer who believes excessive force is being used by another officer, they have to report it and they have to verbally and physically intervene to stop it. And again, also, anybody that's had force used on them, once they're properly restrained, they need to be put into an upright seated or standing position as soon as it's deemed safe and practical. Again, that's pretty much a standard practice for us in training, but needed to be put in here, given what happened to Mr. Floyd. I think that I pretty much covered everything that we changed in the policy. Again, I felt pretty good about it, but I think that there was some specific, specific language that needed to be changed. We've got other things in place that, that I think is important for people to know on how we're, we're managing oversight and compliance with our officers. If you'll bear with me a few minutes, I'll go through that as well. Is there any questions about the actual written policy, use of force policy, deadly So we do a couple of things to make sure that we're staying on top and making sure that officers are being compliant. We modified our policy when I got here. Any use of force that's anything greater than open-handed restraint is reviewed by a review panel. It's made up of a lieutenant, a defensive tactics instructor, as well as a sergeant. They look at it from an administrative standpoint, is, was it within policy? Was it outside policy? Or do we have a policy failure that we need to change our policy? That's every, every instance that we have. Every time officers use force, in addition to their incident report, they fill out a use of force report. And I'll go through those stats here in a minute. The body cameras, this is the instances where our body cameras have to be turned on. Each officer on the department is equipped with an individual body camera that downloads at the end of every shift. The officers have no ability to erase or edit the body camera footage and it's stored off-site by our vendor. The body cameras have to be placed in the standby mode and start recording when the officer presses a large button. After an incident this past fall where an officer failed to record an encounter with a citizen, which was captured, captured on another officer's camera, we changed our policy now and require the uniform patrol officer to carry their camera in the standby mode rather than turning it off and on. It takes an extra couple of seconds to turn it off and on. Sometimes things happen quickly and they forget about it, or they get out of the car and they start running after somebody and they forget to turn it on. So we put it in that standby mode and made it part of our policy to make it easier for them to remember to do it. The standby mode also because our car cameras are now synced with our body cameras. So if you've got your camera in standby mode and I'm out talking to Councilman Sprenad and I don't have my camera on and we start fighting, if a squad car pulls up with his lights on, those lights automatically come on, they record and the car comes on. And as it gets close, it'll click my camera on. So anybody that's out that hasn't got their camera on, it'll switch it on as long as it's in that standby mode. Our car cameras will turn on every time the lights are activated, the emergency lights, if a long gun is unwrecked or when the back door is open, as if you're putting a prisoner in. We've got a camera in the backseat as well. We do hold officers accountable. We've got policies against not turning cameras on. I understand mistakes are made, but we pound it into their heads that this is probably one of the most important things you need to be doing right now. We've seen this time and time again where this absolves us of allegations and it kind of keeps them in check and allows us to go back and review that information. We've got a 30-second buffer on the cameras. So if I show up and we're talking and then suddenly it turns into a fight, I hit record, I'm going to capture that 30 seconds beforehand that we were talking to see what leads up to the fight. The discipline for officers that fail to activate their cameras, normally it's going to start on the first offense with constructive feedback and it'll work its way up to suspensions and reprimands. We keep our video footage for a year unless it's needed for evidence, unless, or if the footage captures a use of force incident, images involving an encounter which leads to formal or informal complaint about an officer conduct, or any footage capturing images leading up to and including the arrest of a subject, we retain those for no less than 30 months, depending on what the county attorney's office asks us to do. The reason we don't record shifts from start to finish is, is just the storage. We just don't have the storage capacity. It would cost too much to do it. And I think that's pretty much a standard complaint across the country as to why we don't just click them on and hit record as soon as we walk out of the roll call room. So another kind of process I think we have that helps us quite a bit is, is our management practices. And if you remember back in January, February, I came and asked for two more sergeant positions and you guys granted it. And part of the reason is I wanted three sergeants on each patrol shift. And part of the reasoning I told you was so we had officers, sergeants on the streets that could show up to those high volatility calls and be a presence there for the officers, not only as backup, but to kind of oversee things. And so you, you allowed me to do that. We've been doing it. I think that helps. We also have sergeants randomly go through every month and look at body camera footage, not just if an officer uses force. The sergeants go through about once a week and just pick random events out of the people on their ship and look at the body camera footage, proactively looking for people being compliant with our policies. And maybe stuff that we didn't know about or something they didn't put in a report, they may catch, catch it by doing it that way. Going forward, some of the things we've been looking at, right before the COVID mess, one of the things that departments are going to is having crisis specialists on, on staff to go out on the mental health calls, the alcohol calls and the drug calls. Foundation Two here in Cedar Rapids has a program I get. Cedar Rapids utilizes it. Just before COVID hit, I'd been in contact with Emily Bloom. We talked about it. I've got a price on what it would cost us to do it. I met last week with Cedar Rapids with their crisis counselor and the officers they have assigned to the program. Myself and Chad met with them. I think it's something that we want to do. I think based on what they're doing with their counselors over there, I think it would relieve our staff, the officers of having to do quite a bit of stuff. And I think it's a better service for the community. I talked to Emily Bloom. I've got somebody coming Monday to talk to our command staff again to see how we're going to make that work. Cedar Rapids funds theirs through a grant. The grant session ended in May, so I'm looking at ways that I can maybe pull that off out of next year's budget or start the process. So we've got that ready for next spring. I think it's a good program. It's something I think we need to do. And I'll hit you up later about that when I get the, I get the cost. I'll just hold off on that for right now. But, so the data, I, you know, I'm kind of a data guy. And so what I did, I went through and I looked at every use of force report that we've had. I looked at every internal complaint we had from 2015 to the present, about five and a half years. Overall, we had 143,000 calls for service during that timeframe. There was about another 10 or 11 calls that we went on with the fire department, but I didn't count those. We did, the arrest isn't off. That's my fault. I was doing my own PowerPoint, so I shouldn't do it. It's actually 7,612 arrests during that timeframe, a little bit more. Tickets, 20,000, and traffic warnings, 22,598. Go to the next one. So our use of force reports, these are those individual reports that we've been filling out. I went in and I looked at each one. There was 101 incidents involving 121 people. And the reason that number is different, we had a few where we had multiple people in a car that was pulled over. We had, I, there was at least one that was like a stolen car that had four people in it where the officers got out, did a felony car stop and pointed their gun at the direction of the car. I counted all four of those people as being subjects of that. So that's why that number is a little bit higher than the actual incidents. I thought it was important to pull out the demographics. Our use of force forms collects the race of the subject, the age, the sex, his height, weight, her height, weight, what the original call was, what the force used was, what the force used against the officer was, how many body cameras, which officers were present. It's pretty comprehensive. And I don't know that a lot of departments do that. We have the benefit, I think, of doing things like that because we don't have that many uses of force as we go through this. But I thought it was important to pull out the demographics. If you see that, 85% were male, 15% were female, 81% were white, 16% were black, and 3% were listed as other. Switch that. So this is the actual types of force that we used. We tased 16 people in five and a half years, which is pretty low. We didn't have any pepper spray incidents, and I think people have quit carrying it mostly since they started getting tasers. We didn't have any ASP, sorry, ASP strikes, 16 tasers. We had 37 incidents where an officer actually put their hand on somebody that was more than going open-handed restraint, whether they had to tackle somebody, whether they chased somebody, tackled them, including strikes. There was two incidents where we had strikes listed, and any other kind of physical restraint that the officers had used during that timeframe. And in 48 incidents, or 39% of them involved an officer drawing or pointing a weapon at somebody. I saw that first number when I, when I was totaling these up and it, it seemed a little high to me, but then I started going back and reading the situations. And a lot of them are felony traffic stops. We had a couple of instances where people would call in calls about an armed party and our officers would show up and encounter them and they pulled their weapons out and pointed at them. So that accounted for 48 of the 101 uses. And I did, I'll give you a caveat on that. Some of those involve more than one technique, so I went with the, what I thought would be the more harsh one. For instance, if they wrestled with somebody before they tased them, I counted as a tasing and not a physical contact. So kind of the summary, out of 143,000 calls, we arrested 7,612. I got that one right. 101 uses of force, that's about 0.07% of the time we use force on a call out of that 143,000. 121 individuals listed in the use of force reports. And I'm assuming they were all arrested and, and that again, everybody that was listed, I put force was used against them. That's about 1.6% of everybody who were arrested had some type of force used against them, which actually is pretty low compared to other places. I'm pretty proud of that. When you take out the, the number of the weapons pulled and just look at the physical restraints and the tasing, you know, it cuts it in half to about 0.8, which is extremely Subjects injured, so, or I'm sorry, injured, if they listed as a subject being injured on the report, there was 14 out of the 101 incidents where we had somebody injured. And it didn't categorize whether or not they were transported to the hospital. It was just that an ambulance showed up. They may have been treated on the scene. They may have also been taken to a name, or to a hospital for further care, but 13%. And then we had officers four times required medical attention after, and that was about 4%. I did not count in there the taisings on the subjects' injuries, which would increase that 14 up a little bit, because every time we tase somebody, we take them to the hospital. It's just part of our policy, whether they're actually injured or not. I would say two darts going into you is an injury, but that's me. Go to the next slide. So out of the 143,000 calls we've had, the 101 incidents where we had used force, I can only find four complaints of anybody saying we use excessive force since 2015, which I think is very low. In the incidents, the officers were either exonerated because the force used was, was deemed appropriate and reasonable and within policy and the law. And I think two of the incidents, it just didn't happen. We reviewed the body camera footage. There was no, no slapping, no kicking. I think one individual, when we slammed the door on his foot or his leg, and we've got body camera footage showing that it never happened. Again, I feel pretty good about that. When you look at the statistically, the percentages is very low on, out of those complete calls and arrests that we've had. Is that the last slide? Okay. So any questions about any of that that I can, right now? Do you think that, I understand, I wanted to kind of get out in front of some of the questions the community had. I, I was impressed with the department when I got here after. I was impressed with the department when I got here after diving into that stuff. I'm more impressed. I think, you know, what happened up in Minnesota is wrong, and it's a crime, and those officers should go to jail. And I haven't spoken to a single officer here or anyplace else that thought that, you know, that was the right thing for those officers to do. There's reforms that need to be made in our profession, and there's bad apples that need to be weeded out, and we're going to continue to do our part to do that. But with that said, I'm very proud of the men and women of the Marion Police Department. I think the data shows that they do things right. I think they treat people respectfully and with dignity and professionally, and I think they're going to keep doing it. I do want to publicly thank, or publicly thank members of the community. We've had a lot of support the last couple of weeks. We've got more food than we can eat. We've got cards and some very nice emails that I shared with some of you earlier. So I'll be happy to answer questions for you if anybody in the community wants more, they want to come sit down with me. I'm happy to sit down and talk about what we do and how we do it. We are going to do a Citizens Academy this fall that we can have people come in and they can see, you know, firsthand, meet the people and meet our folks and hopefully relieve any angst anybody has about how we perform.
I have something, Mayor.
Yeah, let me just picture. Are you, Chief? Okay, go ahead, Renee.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing this information. How's morale? I mean, it sounds like things are, you're getting a lot of positive from the community. I'm hoping that, I mean, that's awesome. Is morale okay then here? I know we're right next to Cedar Rapids, and they've been having a bit of a different experience that, some of that I think is because they're the second largest city, but we're very close to them. So I'm wondering if we're getting any of that anger or misunderstanding toward our officers when they're going out on calls. Can you describe how that's been since the incident?
Yeah. I think morale seems to be okay. I think officers are a little concerned with how things unfolded in Atlanta recently, where officers were being arrested and charged criminally quickly. And I, there was some talk about, I actually sent an email to them this morning about my biggest fear is that one of our guys hesitates to use some kind of force when they need to because they're afraid of the backlash. And so I've just, I shared these stats with them. I said, "Look, you know what you're doing. You're obviously doing things right. Just keep doing what you're doing, and we'll be okay." They understand the community supports them. We've had some comments, bad comments. I had one officer said that he thought somebody was waving at him, so I waved back, and they were actually giving him the finger, but, you know, that happens.
That's a California howdy.
Yeah, yeah. But other people have approached officers in the parking lot or come up to them on the street and thank them for their service, so we'll be fine.
Excellent, and thank you for instituting the Citizens Academy. I know in your interview, that was something you said that I thought was a great idea, and I think it's very timely now to get that going this fall and give people an inside view and continue to build on the relationship. So that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Steve?
Yeah, Chief, I mean, as a long-term resident, it has been, the Marion Police Force has been looked upon in this entire area, including Cedar Rapids and Lynn County, as one of the toughest ones around, but it's also an expectation by the community based upon citizen surveys that safety is one of the top things that they are looking for in the community. And it's clear, being a police officer anywhere right now is a lot more challenging than it ever used to be. So when I read, I didn't know exactly what changes you had made. I think you outlined them there, but when I read this over the weekend and saw what was in there, I think the changes you made are absolutely appropriate based upon what has been happening. You've been proactive in doing that, and I appreciate that. So I think they are the ones that everybody would probably expect to be in there and have clarified for your police. The one comment that I think I, if you can provide a comment, I think I probably know your reaction. I think I've heard it once before, but to make sure as part of this presentation, one of the things that is happening in lots of communities is a citizen review board. So based upon that, could we get your comments on how you feel about that?
Yep. It's, it's kind of, I don't want to say catch 22. I want to be transparent with people and, but I want to be fair to the officers as well, and I think depending on how something like that was set up and what they would be doing, I'm not necessarily for it, but if it's what the community asked for, we'll do it. I think that you have to be careful with the people you put on a board like that. You got to make sure that those people are fair. I think it kind of puts them at somewhat of an unfair advantage, having to judge officers. We were talking about this the other day with a couple of the officers when in our break room, and I said, "All four of us can have somebody that we're dealing with on the side of the road or getting ready to arrest, and we've got their hands on the back of a squad car." And every one of us, all four of us, can tell you exactly when that person's getting ready to run. And so we may go up and put our hands on the person, grab them by the bell, grab one wrist, and start handcuffing them. Somebody that's never dealt with that doesn't understand that and may say, "Hey, that's wrong," or "That's too much force." Where we know, alls we're doing is preventing a foot chase, which is going to wind up with probably more injuries to us or the suspect. So I think we have to be careful with that. Again, I look at our numbers. I kind of worry they'd be bored, you know, if we did do it. I know there's a cost associated with that to get that set up as far as man hours and the time we spend making sure that we have, that they get adequate access to the reports, but also there's personnel issues in there that I think legal would have to weigh in on, on what we do. And then ultimately, what's the authority of that group? And does it create a liability for us? If the review group that is part of the, a board of the city comes out and says they believe excessive force was used, but our department, our internal affairs people say absolutely not, it was, does that create a problem liability-wise if somebody sues us?
I'm not saying I'm a proponent for it. I just wanted your comment on it. I mean, obviously, it's in the news. Cedar Rapids is already committed to do it, and just because Cedar Rapids is doing it doesn't necessarily mean it's appropriate for Marion to do it, because the data, the numbers between the two cities are going to be quite different. And based upon what you presented, I think they are quite different. So, and you've also outlined, I think, a very robust review process when you have use of force in any situation. So at this point in time, I think you've got things well under control.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Bullet?
I don't have to say anything now because Steve said it all, so appreciate your leadership with the officers are doing out there for Marion. Just really appreciate, and the transparency, which is super important. And I'll be the first to sign up for the academy in the fall. I can't wait.
Anyone else? Yes, go ahead.
Chief, I just want to compliment you for adding the language around the, I guess, the obligation for other officers to intervene if they think the use of force protocols are being violated. I think that will go a long way to negate and prevent any situation that really would, might be under the purview of a citizens review board, should we ever have that. So I, I think that's a great preventive measure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being proactive and for taking the time to give us this information. I think it'll help us in answering questions, and we have one more.
Yeah, sorry. Just, Chief, either you or Rachel or Terrell, can we get a copy of your PowerPoint?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate everything you and the department are doing.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, library project detailed design budget presentation. So we have library director here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This has been a very exciting week for us at the library. Hope you all have had a chance to see our signs on our site across the way. We, that, those signs were met with a lot of joy and tears and lots of excitement with our staff this week and our library board, so very excited to have those up. We are here tonight to present what we presented to the library board at our last library board meeting, which is the next phase of our project, the detailed design budget. I have two of my new best friends with me tonight. I have Sean Kelly from Ingberg Anderson, our architect team, and Jared Engler from Bush Construction, whose team actually, in conjunction with our architects team, put together our detailed design budget. So I'm going to turn the presentation over to them, and then I'll have some closing comments here at the end. I'll turn it over to Sean first.
Hello, I'm Sean Kelly with Ingberg Anderson. The presentation tonight, we'll go through a little bit of the design, and then we'll talk about the budget. I'm going to go through it relatively quickly, but I can stop at any point if you have questions or we need to go back and review or anything. So overall, I wanted to share the site plan to start out with. This is the location of this, as hopefully all of you know, but I'll just describe it, is actually right next door to us. On the north is Sixth Avenue, and the south is Fifth, and then 11th and 12th Street. 11th is to the west, and 12th Street is to the east. So that is where the site is located in Uptown Marion. The building will be oriented east to west and will be on the north side of the property, so it'll be a long Sixth Avenue. The south portion of the site is where we're going to locate parking, as well as a book drop area and drive-through services that the library will be providing. Overall, we have an entrance on the north and on the south, but that, we do have some floor plans which might help clarify that in further slides. I wanted to show some of the concept images, and I'd like to really thank everyone involved with the process. This has been a really, I'd say, very interactive, really pleasant. We don't always get this much participation in this, I'd say, as many as good ideas as we had as we go through this. We do believe in a very interactive process with all stakeholders. So we have a steering committee, which is made up of three of the council members, as well as library board members, public participation, uptown participation in the, so it's a really great group. We go to the library board and present and receive feedback there as well, and then with other members of the community. So what you're seeing here is kind of a culmination of a lot of different feedback and, and good ideas that came from all areas of the community. So what you're seeing, this is the, this, we're standing in the park right now, and we're looking back towards what would be the north entry of the building. So this is Sixth Avenue and 11th Street. The main entry is located in this area. We've basically got two main materials on the building. I'm not counting glass because it's kind of the negative of a material, but we also have glass. We have a brick as well as some metal panels on the building. This is the view from 11th Street, so we're looking into the building, which you'll see on the left is Sixth Avenue, and then the parking lot would be to the right. On the first floor of the building, which we'll see in the plans, that you're looking into the meeting rooms here, so we wanted to locate a function here that might be able to break out in the future and utilize this side of the building. But hopefully, very active and lively. You're also seeing on the upper level, a terrace that will be accessible to the public and anyone willing to go out there and use it. This is the north elevation, so this is all along Sixth Avenue. You can see a little bit of 12th Street on the left, but the elevation carrying along this, this street. So this is kind of, we broke up the building into these different sections as we moved down, so it's more of a brick section. There's a small, more glass and metal section and a brick section. All of this is in line with the zoning requirements for a building of this scale in the downtown. So trying to take a very long, the full elevation is over 250 feet long, so trying to take that, that building and break it up and kind of keep it in the character of what the uptown is. This is a view from the parking lot, so this would be the south entry to the building. We brought materials on this side that we were using on the front. You've seen basically just the main entry here, some bike racks off to the left, and just the same two primary materials of metal and brick, as well as a third material, which negative would be glass. Next. And then where we're at in the process here is we're starting to finalize some of our materials. We are planning, and I do have a little schedule at the end here, to submit planning and zoning, which would be all of the exterior images, the site plan, and the materials. So we've, we're, I think, ready to start moving forward on some of these selections, or finalizing some of these selections. I know that the materials have been available for different community members to view during this process, and that would be part of our planning and zoning, which is their next These are a little small, so I apologize, but these are, the floor plans start on the first floor. Just a quick overview, the arrows, the large red arrows indicate the entry, so those align coming in from the north, which faces the uptown, and then one from the south, which faces the parking lot. To the left side is mainly the meeting rooms and kind of this marketplace area, which is really more of a fast casual, like quick hits, new books, popular things. You just want to come into the library, grab your materials, and be on your way. Also located on this floor is the youth services department, which is on the right, and then there is some staffing to the south. The two stars on the bottom represent a book drop as well as a service window, so you'll be able to reserve materials online and pick them up via your car. The two smaller arrows in the center of the plan indicate the ability to go to the second floor. The second floor is made up of the main, on the left would be the main adult collections area, more of your traditional library services in that area. The center area where you enter into the large red arrow is more of a, more of a common space for having technology, as well as some of the content creation stuff. There's also a nice boardroom on this floor, as well as some art and kind of, again, content creation type of rooms that can be reserved out. And on the right, kind of center-right, is the teens, teen zone on the second floor. All the way to the right and on the bottom would be staff spaces, as well as a mechanical room for the building. We are just starting to get into some of the interior, and these are some really preliminary items. We started to pick material colorways. We haven't actually selected everything yet, but what we're going through here is just kind of narrowing down, seeing things we like, and the material selection process is really a tactile. You need to see and feel them, so we're just getting into that, but I wanted to give you a hint of where we're heading. So these are more of the adult palettes that we're looking at. These would be kind of in major adult zones within the building. You're seeing images of the entry. On the second slide here, these are more of the teen and young adult palettes, a little brighter, but this is kind of our starting point for the space. And you're seeing on the bottom image there, a little hint of some of our initial concepts for kids. Again, very preliminary on this, but I wanted to keep you up to date on where we're at. So before we go further, because I believe the next slide, I'll turn it over to Jared. I was wondering if there's any questions on the, on the design portion?
Questions? All right. Thank you.
Good evening. Jared Engler with Bush Construction. I'm going to talk briefly on the budget tonight. So over about the past six months, we've been continuing to refine the budget as we work through design. Since we haven't started construction yet, our job as the construction manager is really to focus on the cost of the project and the constructability of the project, and that's what we've been focusing on this, this past time. From the kind of technical jargon that we use through the different phases of the budgets, the first one that we worked on was the schematic design of budget that we've previously completed. And that was that 18, you know, around $18 million number that we were targeting. Now, as the drawings continue to refine, you can see with Sean's detail, the drawings are a lot further evolved now. So now we took those drawings and went to a lot of local contractors here in the Marion, Cedar Rapids area, and were able to get additional budgets from them. We haven't competitively bid the project yet, but we kind of went to one sub in every scope and said, "Hey, now these drawings are a little bit further refined. Help us dial the number a little bit tighter." So you can see on the top number there, we're sitting right now at about 18.37 million with that all-in number. And you're probably thinking, "Well, you're a little bit over that budget," but that's, we're right at about 2% over, which is a really good place to be at this point in the game. For a conceptual budget at a DD level, that's a really, it's a really good range to be in. So we're happy at this point, at this, at this stage in the game, to be at that point. You know, we still have to competitively bid the project, and in the market we're in right now, we're very confident that we'll be able to deliver it on budget. You can see the next phases there, the soft costs, those really haven't changed. Those are all the, the numbers we're carrying for the design team, the construction manager, the general project costs. If you go to the next slide, you can see the detail that kind of makes up this estimate. Those are all the different construction phases that we carry, so building concrete and masonry, and those are all the different construction divisions that make up the estimate. Again, those are all the different numbers that we got basically subcontractor proposals for. And you can see at the very bottom, right now, we're tracking some alternate costs. There's four of them right now that we're looking at. The first one is an entrance canopy on the south side of the The first one is an entrance canopy on the south side of the building that we've kind of broken out as kind of an additional feature that we could, that we could put into the project. Another one is on the south side of the building, I'd call it a little bit fancier brick detailing that could also be put into the project. The snow melt system, this would be actually tubing in the concrete that you could flip a switch and actually heat up the concrete to melt snow to kind of keep the entrances from, from icing up. And then the fourth one would be a, a staff elevator. Again, there, there might be a few more that pop up through the final design. Those, those always kind of come up through, through the design process, so if any of them, any more pop up, we'll definitely kind of keep them on the list, but those are what we've got right now.
Sure. Yep.
Excuse the interruption. I just wanted to talk a little bit about these alternates that are listed here. We are, we do have a library board meeting coming up to prioritize this list. As you might recall, those of you that have been a little closer to the project, but hopefully those of you that have also been briefed, many of the items that are listed here are items that came up after the original design of the project. These are, most of these are things that came through feedback that we got from our steering committee, from the library board and different community members. So, this is the reason why they are set aside as alternates, because they weren't a part of that schematic design concept that we brought forward the last time. The one exception to that is the staff elevator, which during our board meeting, they've asked, actually asked me to stop referring to it as a staff elevator. It's actually elevator number two. There is strong support with the library board for us to have redundancy in elevators for safety and aesthetic reasons, right? So, if we have folks go up on the second floor using one elevator and that elevator dies for whatever reason, and we have folks with mobility issues or there's medical emergencies, having redundant elevators in the building is desired by the library board. So, we are going to be talking about these coming up, but I wanted you all to hear a little bit of some of the conversation that the library board has been having around those alternates as well. So, thank you.
Any questions around the budget portion?
Questions? Go ahead, Will.
So, the south facade entry canopy at 29,000, was that the, going from the door all the way over to 11th, basically?
Yes, yes, that is.
And then I'll just add while I'm talking, staff elevator or elevator two, I think is very important to have. So, through my opinion now.
We have a couple more slides here. If you go to the next slide, this is kind of a summary of where we're at today. So, the red indicates what we've completed. So, we've gone through what Holly, Jared was describing, which is schematic design and then design development. The two gray squares coming up are construction documents. The reason that those two are separated, and it's not just one phase, is we are planning to do this in a two-bid package project. So, the first bid package will include site and structural costs. The reason for that is we want to get in this fall so that we can try to get better, get in before the winter, and then the second bid package will come out a little bit later, and that would be like the mechanical, electrical plumbing and all of the architectural features. So, that is why that, that is split up. The second half of this wheel really is Jared and his team, which would be construction bidding of the project. So, we still have a, a nice ways to go on the plan, and that goes back to, so we're basically halfway through design, and being at this stage, you know, we're basically within 2% of the budget. You know, our goal is to try to make sure we can get as much service out of this building to the community as possible, so we're trying to definitely balance those needs with, with the budget. And so, I'm, I'm really excited. I do this all the time, every day. To be this close at the stages is, is good overall, so I just wanted to kind of reiterate that point.
Thank you. So, I have a question. The alternates, are those in this budget? Are they factored in? They're not factored in?
No.
Okay. So, what would make one of those alternates move into the actual budget?
So, we, with any project, and, and maybe Jared could, could describe this as well, we would like, we always tend to carry some alternates, so if we come in a lot under budget and we try to prioritize these, we could elect to take them.
There's some extra room there. You can add something in. Okay.
Additionally, we always, with, with every project, there's a contingency. And at the end of the project, if there is some contingency left over and we do see a real need and a real use for this alternate, you could also elect that.
That'd be another source of funding some of those alternatives.
I was just going to add too, I think that's a little bit of the glory of having two bid packages. So, we'll know pretty soon that first bid package and how that comes in, and I'll let the expert talk about that. But we'll know pretty soon here after that first bid package, we might know at that point whether we can move some of those alternates ahead as well.
Okay. Good.
No, Holly said it perfectly. When, when we do multiple.
Speak into the microphone, please, because we have people at home listening to this too.
No, Holly said it perfectly. When we do multiple bid releases like this, that gives us a good opportunity to kind of check the budget. So, we'll, we'll bid out probably five or six packages at the beginning here, and then we'll know if we're trending above or below budget on those first packages, and then, then we'll have a good understanding of how the rest of, rest of the project's going to trend, and then we'll typically know that we're right on track with, with what our estimates gonna, gonna look like. So, we've had good success doing it that way.
Steve has a question?
Yeah, I mean, my comment, and looking at it overall, at this point in time, being only 2% over that budget is pretty, looking pretty solid, especially when you go out and start getting your competitive bids. I'm not sure how many major projects will be going on in the area. That's always a key aspect of who's available. I think also, there's certainly going to be an anticipation with as many local companies as possible. That's, I think, an absolute must. But I mean, so you've got some other areas. You've got your contingency in there. You've got winter conditions line.
Sure.
And if we have a winter in 2021, like we did this last one, you're not going to use up all of your winter conditions dollars. And so, there's always, you know, another one or two buckets where some of those might be able to come from, but you won't know some of those until you're halfway into the project. So, some of these things don't have to be decided upfront, like that canopy can be decided, you know, next spring, for example, when you're halfway into it and you're going to have a very solid number on your cost. Some of the things like the snow melt, you're going to have to decide that pretty early.
Sure.
A few of these, you can decide quite a bit later. So, you know, the, obviously the elevator, you're going to have to decide pretty early. That's your biggest one.
Sure.
So, anyway, I think at this stage, yeah, everybody ought to feel pretty good about where this is sitting today.
Absolutely.
So, congrats to the whole team.
Yeah, I'm glad you touched on the, on the, the local bidding and the, and the contractor outreach. You know, we, Sean talked about schedule. We're, we're trending right now to have our first, those first packages out to bid in early August. So, our plan is to start reaching out to local contractors and have a community outreach session with them at the beginning of August and really get the message out there, reaching out the local chamber, the local community to let them know, to make sure we get as many local bidders aware of the project as possible. We've already had a lot of them reach out to us to ask them, you know, when's the bid date, what's going on, have we missed it? And I said, no, we haven't missed it yet. We're, we're in the process of getting the drawings finalized. So, we can get the message out there, I think will drum up a lot of, a lot of interest in the project and get a lot of people.
Everybody's aware of this project.
Yeah.
Everybody's aware of it.
I'm glad to see the signs go up. I've been wondering about, asking for that. So, yeah, and we have a lot of visitors at this time of year to, to the town, so it's nice for people to see if there's a project coming on that site.
You betcha.
So.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
Other questions?
I have, I have some additions.
Go ahead.
So, now you all know why I refer to them as my best friends. They're really great, and I just want to say thank you to Jared and Sean for all of the work that they've been doing. It's crazy how much Sean takes care of us, and like, all of a sudden, he has P&amp;Z meetings scheduled and all of these things, and he knows who to talk to. I feel very well taken care of. I've learned a ton, and I appreciate their grace and patience. As I've said many times, I've never even built a house, so this has been a tremendous effort. The one thing that I want to make sure that council is aware of after we've shared all of this good news, not, I always want to end on a high note. We had some pretty big discussions today, and I have maybe more concerns today than I thought I, I was going to have kind of coming into this meeting specifically regarding the movement of the houses on that property. Mr. Trey Harns on the call, we had a good bit of discussion about that today. There is not good clarity around whether or not those houses are going to be moved in time to meet our schedule to take possession of the site. And as we talk about where we are from a budget perspective, I would be remiss in not letting you all know that that is a risk right now to our project, and that if we are not able to meet the, you know, the schedule that we've put out before, we're going to start to have some budgetary implications to our project. So, I have asked, respectfully requested from the city staff, a little bit more clarity and understanding about what the next steps are. We were originally told August of last year and then March, and then, you know, it just keeps getting pushed out, and I would, I think it would be very helpful to us to know whether or not we need to have a contingency for this project and what will that look like if we are not able to, to meet our schedule and what that, the budget repercussions are. So, I just, we, we had that conversation today, and I'll leave you all with that to discuss, but we are going to need to have some clarity on that for the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion on that?
Your Honor, I just wanted to say that Renee left the call. She had another meeting at six.
Okay. So, council member Goodella has left the, the meeting. Okay. Perfect. Okay, we will proceed to the final item now, which is our closed session. Would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to closed session regarding land acquisition as permitted under section 21.5 of the Iowa Code, the Code of Iowa.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding land acquisition as permitted under section 21.51J of the Code of Iowa. May we have the legal counsel's opinion, please?
Your Honor, I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section 21.51J.
Thank you. Any discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sternan?
Yes.
Okay, we are now adjourned to closed session. We'll return to open session upon completion. Thank you for joining us.